For conditional use permit for Synergium Green Energy to construct an ammonia distribution facility west of Aurora, northeast quarter of Section 3, Township 10, Range 7 West, Hamilton County, Nebraska. Information on the application is available for public inspection at the Office of Planning and Zoning Administrator located at 1111 13th Street, Aurora, Nebraska. The agenda may be modified prior to the meeting. Okay, you need to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. The time is 7:19 PM.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
It's been moved to say to open the public hearing. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passed. Can I report on this item? The zoning office received an application for a conditional use permit by Synergium Green Energy for a green ammonia project as an agriculture production distribution facility to be located on the northeast quarter of Section 3, Township 10, Range 7 West, Hamilton County, Nebraska. Information on the application is available for public inspection at the Office of Planning and Zoning Administrator located at 1111 13th Street, Aurora, Nebraska. The agenda may be modified prior to the meeting. Okay, you need to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. The time is 7:19 PM.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
It's been moved to say to open the public hearing. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passed. Can I report on this item? The zoning office received an application for a conditional use permit by Synergium Green Energy for a green ammonia project as an agriculture production distribution facility to be located on the northeast quarter of Section 3, Township 10, Range 7 West, Transitional Ag District, Hamilton County, west of Aurora on Highway 34. The proposed 168 acres site consists of three parcels owned privately. All owners gave authorization to Synergium Green Energy to apply for the conditional use permit. In review of the application, it is my interpretation that ammonia is a commonly used fertilizer which would categorize as an agriculture cooperative production distribution facility by definition, Page 4, Hamilton County Regulations. Agriculture cooperative production distribution facility. Any facility owned and operated by cooperative or other cooperation for the purpose of manufacturing, distributing, and storage of fertilizers, herbicides, and grains. This includes the office, scales, and parking areas necessary for trucks and other vehicles. The project follows all set ag requires per regulation, Page 77, Table 4901, and is a permitted use with the issuance of the conditional use permit. The Hamilton County Zoning Office requested assistance on the conditional use permit application process from our consultant at Martin Planning Consultants, John Shepherd. John will be giving a summary of the application and answering questions pertaining to the conditional use permit and our county regulations. This notice was required. Okay, is there anyone in the public that can speak in favor of this item?
Good evening, Chair Commissioners David Levy, Bear Home Law Firm, 1700 Barnett Street in Omaha, representing Synergium Green Energy, the applicant. I just really want to thank you for your time and attention to this tonight. I will next introduce John Hewitt from Synergium, who will give an overview of the project. We will certainly be here, will be taking notes during the public comment, and will be happy to respond to any questions that the commission may have after you hear from the rest of our team in the public. So, thank you.
So, good evening, Madam Chair. Hold on. Does it matter?
There you go.
Good evening, Madam Chair and other committee members. So, my name is John Hewitt. I'm the Vice President of Projects and Energy, working for Synergium Green Energy, which is located at 1580 Part 10 Place in Houston, Texas, and my personal address is in Portland, Oregon. I'm here to talk about our project this evening. We can give you, committee, and the facts and figures, but what we have chosen to do is to give you some documentation that you've already received this evening. And we plan on making that same information available to the public after the speaking. If they wish to have it.
Hold a little motion in your mouth, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, what I would like to do, in principle, rather than get into all sorts of facts and figures, is just tell you why we're here in Aurora. There's a very strong legacy for ammonia production in Nebraska, dating back to the 1950s. It's a fertilizer, liquid fertilizer product that's very familiar to all of the farming community here. Over a million tons of ammonia is imported annually, and there's occasions when there are deficits and price hikes, et cetera. So, by bringing ammonia production and distribution into Nebraska, we hope to improve the supply chain and the security for ammonia products. Why did we choose Aurora? It checks so many boxes, us being here. The first and most important thing is that there is a market, where there is a demand for the product to be brought in. The second thing is that there is logistic solution to get that product to market. So, there's an existing network of distributors. We plan on being a wholesaler with our own distributors, but most importantly, we are located very close to the end of the New Star Energy Ammonia Pipeline. It's about .7 miles from the proposed site. We propose that the vast majority, it will vary year to year, excuse me, the vast majority of the ammonia that we produce will just go under Highway 34 by pipeline to join into the New Star, the New Star Pipeline. We hope that there will be local purchases as well, and we plan to distribute liquid ammonia by truck. That will happen twice a year, typically around about a month, in the spring of the four fertilizer seasons. We anticipate that there will be about four trucks a day, six days a week, that's 24 trucks in total in a week, which gives 96 for that month. So, very, very low traffic impact. And entrance and egress, the main entrance and egress to the plant will be off Highway, or sorry, County Road South L, and there will also be entrance on Highway 34, but most of the truck traffic will come in off of County Road. One of the things that we have found working here is that we've had a lot of support from the community. It's been very encouraging. We do recognize that there are some concerns principally around the amount of water that the plant will use, and so we'd actually like to spend most of our time talking about water this evening. But, so that everybody understands, you know, how do we make ammonia? Basically, we have just three ingredients. We use nitrogen that we pull out of the atmosphere around us. We use electrical energy that we will buy from Southern Power District through retail. And then we also use water, right? And a lot of that water, we also return to, you know, to the ground or to the wastewater system as well. So, I think there's a lot of reasons for us, a lot of reasons for us to be here. We think that this project will really benefit the community because you've got increased jobs. We expect to produce somewhere between 55 and 75 long-term employment jobs. We expect this plant to be here for generations. We would like people to be able to start work at this facility and retire from this facility. So, you know, we're investing in the community and ourselves for the long term, and absolutely nothing that we would do with this plant, you know, should cause harm, would harm ourselves as much as anyone else. So, lots of positives, and of course, the various tax revenues that come with this plant as well. So, we anticipate that there could be, you know, 7 million property tax revenue in post year, and up to 70 million over. So, I would like to introduce Jim Schneider from Olson. Jim led the hydrological studies for this project. He will walk you through all that in sales. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Committee. My name is Jim Schneider, I'm the Vice President at Olson, located at 601 P Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, and I also live in Lincoln, Nebraska. We were hired by Synergium to conduct a specific hydrogeologic evaluation that is required under the rules and regulations of the Upper Great Blue Natural Resource District. Any water use that's going to exceed 500 acre feet per year is required to conduct and submit one of these evaluations, and I'm holding the report with me right now. We, they have a four to six-page document that directs the approach of the hydrologic evaluation, and we followed that approach. I will say, from the get-go, they did also hire a third-party independent peer reviewer who agreed with all of our findings in this report. So, just a real quick dive into the science that goes into an evaluation like this. So, fundamental to everything we do when we are looking at groundwater is data. And we're so fortunate here in Nebraska to have a rich history of very strong groundwater management, and that has included over 50 years of data collection. To give a few examples, every time, every time we drill a well in Nebraska, that provides data. Now, a well lot goes into the state's database and provides additional information. So, as I'm sure you could guess, there have been many wells drilled in Hamilton County over the 50 to 70 years' history of that process, and so it's a very rich source of data to inform us on the aquifer and the geologic variability in the aquifer. The other data source that I wanted to highlight are the water level measurements that the Natural Resource District has been taking for at least 40 years, probably longer. They go and do a spring and fall, slightly as well as fall, synoptic measurements across the NRD. And so, this basically gives us a sense of how the aquifer, or gives us observation information about the aquifer, how it's reacted to the human development of its use since the 1950s. Their, the water levels go up and down with increased use and with dry and wet periods. But, as you may be familiar, the NRD has had a rule in place that would trigger allocations if water levels declined below a certain level, and that rule's been in place for, I believe, over 40 years and never been reached. So, but anyway, so what we do is assemble a set of numerical files that, in the form of a computer simulation. And we go through what's called a calibration of that numerical model, and I'd like to say that that's the process of training it to behave like the real world. You know, we know how the aquifer's gone up and down over the decades, and if the model regresses, won't be observed, then we can conclude from a scientific standpoint that it's a useful tool to evaluate things such as a large water user beginning to pump additional groundwater in an area. One of the things I wanted to highlight as well about the hydrogeologic evaluation and the rules is we are required to look at every single well in a three-mile area. And in the report, there are tables that look like this, every, every well that has been registered with the state, which would only exclude potentially domestic wells that were drilled prior to 1993. Every well that's been registered with the state in that three-mile area, it actually takes four pages. These are all irrigation, commercial, industrial, domestic wells. We look at the depth of the well, the static water level and the pumping water level, the screen interval that are available, and make an independent assessment for every single well of the impact of this large water use on that well. And in general, the vast majority of the results indicate a 2% to 3% reduction in the saturated, the static saturated interval within these wells. So, sure, there will be some drawdowns, generally confined to 1 to 3 feet, being as high as 10 to 14 feet, right on the proposed project site. But, from the standpoint of the existing wells, there does not appear that it will cause any harm to those wells. And just basically, from that, we conclude that the expected impacts to the groundwater supply and pumping capacities at existing wells should be minimal and should not affect their operations. And I'm reading that from the conclusion of this report. The NRD took our report, took the report that their consultant produced as a peer review report, under consideration, as well as the board received guidance from their staff, and following that, they approved the well permit for Synergium. Happy to be here, and I don't think this is the time for questions, but if there are any later, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak for the project?
Hello, Madam Chairman and the rest of the Planning Commission members. I am Kelsey Bergen, and I am the Executive Director of Aurora Development Corporation. We are located at the Bremer Center, which is 1604 L Street here in Aurora, and I am here today to show support for the Synergium project on behalf of my Board of Directors, our 65 supporting businesses, who many of them are here today, as well as our 225 shareholders, because this is a project that holds great promise for Hamilton County. I was a member of a local committee that was assigned to start working on this project in September of 2022, when it was first introduced to us by the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. And they, at that time, all projects kind of have a code name. This one was called Project Renewable NH3. So, through the timeframe, since we learned about this project and we've seen this project continue to grow and evolve, it has transpired like almost every other economic project that is out there. And as things for this project continue to solidify and come together, it was able to go public in January, and we began to talk with our local community members about the project. Our, my committee talked with business leaders, community leaders, workers in the area, our largest employers, farmers, businesses in the ag industry, developers, utility providers, and even in the last couple of weeks, we went as far as to post on Facebook that individuals who want to know more about the project, who had concerns and would like to talk about it in more depth, were welcome to call my office for more information. So, tonight I want to share some of the three main themes that we discussed with these individuals on those calls and conversations, and share what we have saw following this process, and also what we have heard from the community. First and foremost, everyone wanted to know about ammonia production, and since John has already talked about the project and kind of what it looks like, and I know your package is very detailed, I won't spend time touching on this, but we did go over, for those people within and around the agricultural committee, community, and also those that know nothing about fertilizer that is put in the ground, we talked with them about the process, how it works in our area, and how it's used. Secondly, as most people are not surprised, I'm sure, is that people wanted to talk about the water usage. As Jim said, through his account of the hydrological study, it was an in-depth study that not only looked at the project in the next couple of years, but over a long time span. So, I'm not going to expand on the information he already shared, but I can say that in working alongside this project and watching it through every step of the process, and as part of the valuation, as a committee, we realized that we are not experts in water, and so that we have to, we have to trust the decision of the NRD. The NRD Board exists for a reason, and they have a lengthy and thorough process for studying and vetting water sources, especially large water users, and so it's seen that process acted out in real life. It's something that we trust. It is, just for those of you that haven't walked alongside a project for a large water user, I was not aware of the process, but it takes about six months, and there's multiple meetings with the NRD, several rounds of studies, as well as various reviews. So, we started off with Olson Associates. They were hired, and there was an initial review process to see if it was even logical to undergo the full hydrological study. Following that initial analysis in a meeting with the NRD staff, the green light was given to move forward with a full study, and that took another few months, which is largely what Jim talked about. Once the full hydrological review was complete, another meeting with the NRD staff was held to discuss the findings and to see if it was even possible to move forward with the third-party review, and ultimately onto the board. I think something that's very important for everyone to realize is that projects where the hydrological evaluation shows a significant impact on the aquifer or surrounding water users are not even allowed to have the third-party review or go before the NRD Board. So, I can say by watching this experience from every stage of the process over six months, that everybody in the committee and everyone else was also pleasantly surprised by the, the study's ability to show the aquifer in this area and how it was able to use the size of the water use. And that is the end of my time.
Okay, is there anybody else here that's for this? Hello?
My name is Chanelle Stein at 2104 M Street here in Aurora. I'm also the President of Aurora Housing Development Corporation, which is a volunteer for a nonprofit that works on the workforce housing needs of Aurora and Hamilton County. Wanted to express my support of this project. I think, as Kelsey has said, that a group of people smarter than me have determined that this is a good fit for our community, but I did want to address the concerns that I've read, read basically on Facebook about this project and the impact on housing in Aurora and Hamilton County. I think that we have spent the last probably four years preparing for this. We didn't know what this was, but this is what it is. We knew that we were going to have an economic boom at some point. We were due, the cycle happens every 20 years or so, and Aurora was ready. To address that, we have developed an entire tract of land by Westfield in the west side of Aurora. We have 40 lots that are currently available for development. We've also, throughout Hamilton County, in the last three years, have built over 30, or are in the process of building, over 30 units, and with an apartment building breaking ground this month, for the next 30 days. We also have putting grants for another 20 apartment, a 20plex apartment complex, and are speaking with investors every day. I had two meetings today with investors that are interested in building multifamily units or single-family housing in Aurora. It's consistently on our radar. We also have extra land where we have already developed that we can develop further and bring in 60 more lots if necessary. We are proud, we are pumped, we are ready for this. I do not think that housing needs to be a concern when considering this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after this is all done. Thank you.
Anyone else for?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and the Planning Commission. My name is Mike Bergen, 404 South Tiro, Aurora, Nebraska, 68818. I serve as President of Hamilton County Cornrayers, and I am here today to show support for the ammonia project. This initiative holds immense promise for our local agricultural community and aligns with the core values and goals for the future of crop production in Nebraska with Nebraska Cornrayers Association. I want to share how this project aligns from a policy standpoint, how it reduces reliance on imports, and how it will support cost stabilization and provide economic benefit to farmers. At the Nebraska Cornrayers Association, we stand firmly, we believe firmly, that initiatives to enhance domestic competition within fertilizer manufacturing sector. This ammonia project represents the type of opportunity that aligns with our policy objectives, creating a more competitive landscape for fertilizer production right here at home. We currently rely on imports from Russia, the Middle East, and Trinidad to have enough ammonia to fertilize our ground each year. Statistically speaking, the Midwest imports 1.2 million metric tons of ammonia, and Nebraska imports over 660,000 metric tons of ammonia each year. Continuing to depend on imports, but our farmers are disadvantaged from a price and risk standpoint. Having a local source for ammonia will help our supply chain and reduce our dependence on foreign countries. As farmers, we understand and all too well the financial challenges associated with fluctuating input costs. Fertilizer expenses represent a substantial portion of our budget, making any efforts to stabilize these costs incredibly valuable to every operation. Having ammonia produced locally creates greater stability in fertilizer prices, a benefit that directly impacts the bottom line of every farmer in Hamilton County. We have witnessed firsthand the positive impact of local industrial growth, like the ethanol plant just west of town, can have on our bottom line from a farm revenue standpoint. Having a local source for ammonia will positively impact the input side of our farming operation, which continues to enhance the profitability for local farmers. Farmers and landowners in rural Nebraska are tasked with carrying much of the real estate and property tax burden in our state to support our counties, schools, and other taxing entities. Opening the doors to new industries helps us take the pressure off the back of farmers as it grows the tax base they're developing. As an example, I own 40, I own 80 acres of farm ground south of Aurora on Highway 14, and pay approximately $4,600 each year in property tax. As comparison, the Ims plant pays more than a half million dollars in property, personal property, and real estate taxes on only 40 acres. Adding this type of growth to the tax base benefits farmers and property owners all throughout Hamilton County. This project represents a tremendous opportunity for our county and the broader agricultural industry. By supporting this project, we not only embrace innovation and progress, but we also pave the way for a more sustainable and prosperous future for generations of farmers in Hamilton County. If my boys choose to come back and farm as adults, the world of farming will look completely different for them in 10 years than, than when I started. I know this because farming looks much different today than 18 years ago when I started. There will be new technology, new regulations, new efficiencies, and changes we haven't even thought of. Everything we can do along the Everything we can do along the way to give future farmers a competitive advantage and minimize their risks such as having a local source of ammonia will help set them up for success.
Anyone that would like to speak against this item? Please step forward.
Can you hear me now? My name is Anne Ashburn, I live at 703 M Street here in Aurora. Thank you for allowing us to come in and voice our concerns. I heard about this about three weeks ago, and some of the research that I did around the concern of water use was alarming to me. And I'm not sure that the study actually did anything to look outside of Nebraska. There are eight states that actually access the aquifer. We're using personally for the farming 32 billion gallons annually. Each person uses 40,000 gallons per year, so the population in Nebraska alone uses sixty million, not dollars, million gallons of water. Environmentalists have also told us that within fifty years, this water is going to be depleted because it's non-reable. With the climate change, we're not getting the snow, there is no filter, and the attrition to that is so great that over the last four years, we've seen depletion of 325 billion gallons. That is basically equates to a third of Lake Erie or eighteen Colorado rivers, which is a huge amount, and that isn't even the end of it. We have over 200,000 wells that are pumping using for irrigation, and the farmers besides the 320 billion are using 273 million through these wells. Most of this data came from Texas A&amp;M data, and I can supply references if you'd like that. I didn't see anywhere where the study or the information that Synergetic gave us talked about inclusion of all of these uses. It's basically just their use. And they say they're going to conclude this within fifty years, which means there's going to be a depletion of our natural resources during that time. We know that through the depressions, this was a bust hole. After that is when we started accessing water for irrigating the land from the aquifer, and it has been used extensively, not only in Nebraska, but Oklahoma and Kansas use, they rely on this aquifer for ninety-two percent of their water resources. So considering that we're not the only one, I'd really like to see data that includes all of the states that are drawing from this and the individual use, so that we can have a true picture of, you know, where is the water going to be? Are we going to be here, or how, do we really care if we have all this additional past revenue, if it's not going to be sustainable past fifty years? I'm not going to be here, my kids might not be here, but my great-grandchildren will be and my granddaughter will be, and I would like for them to have the viability to stay in Nebraska and have livelihood. I don't see that, you know, and I don't see it being presented where it wouldn't be available for them. I don't know if my battery ran out, that means I talked too long? Another thing that I heard was we're importing. The United States is the fourth largest manufacturer in the world for ammonia. We have plants in South Dakota, we have plants in Oklahoma, we have plants down in Texas, and all of these are actually using the aquifer to produce. So if we're importing, why on earth would we be importing from Russia? Now Russia is first in manufacturing, India is second in manufacturing, then Trinidad, Tobago happen to be up there, they're like third, but we're tied fourth with another country, and I don't remember what it is right now. But I don't understand why we wouldn't be using our own state resources for ammonia. Why would we have to import? It's bound to be less expensive. Now besides that, I'm concerned about the output and how it would damage the soil. We know that ammonia takes more of the... Excuse me, ma'am. Sorry, I'm really dry. Can you address us, please?
Okay, sorry, I want them to understand.
I know, so, address us, please.
Can't hear.
I understand that, we don't have batteries right now. And environmentalists have been testing different processes that are more natural for manufacturing the corn, manufacturing soy. The profits that we manufacture right now represent 35 billion dollars annually, and we don't, we haven't used it, a new ammonia plant, we're using existing. And I do think that we should consider, why are we importing if we're importing from Russia or India, because we don't need to. We've got enough right here to supply our own.
There were several points that I'd like to refer to in my allotted time this evening that I've included information for you to refer to, you'll find that in those packets that I gave you. In the executive summary provided to by the Aurora Development Corporation, in the second paragraph, it refers to a model that was used for the time period of 1941 to 2018. Since the years of 2019 to 23 were not included, does the outcome of the Synergen well permit hydrologic evaluation change anything? Does this lack of correct data, which was not included, does it affect the impact on the aquifer differently? Would it have changed the findings that they had used the last five years? From data shared recently, farmers may have a water allocation this year. We are now on year four of a drought. Should we not be concerned about three million gallons of water being used every day by this user? On the report from Olson Associates presented to the NRD on page thirty-three, item number four, model investigation summary and conclusions, there are several statements that are concerning. Quote, "The impact analysis showed that Synergen's proposed new water use will have minimal impact on existing wells in New York. Water level reductions within the immediate vicinity of the proposed well were in the range of ten to fourteen and a half feet." Also, quote, "There does not appear to be any reason why the proposed large water use should not be approved for construction and operation at a maximum pump rate of 2,300 gallons per minute," unquote. So what is considered minimal impact to those that live around there? Would the impact on existing wells in the area be compromised at the years of 2019 through 2023? Water usage data had been calculated in the Synergen well permit hydrologic evaluation in the Hamilton County to Nebraska Comprehensive Plan adopted in 2018 on page seventy-three. There is a section titled Prime Farmland. According to this plan, it refers to the importance of prime farmland and that the USDA encourages all levels of government and individuals that they, quote, "must encourage and facilitate the wise use of our nation's prime farmland," unquote. The property that is along Highway 34 is definitely defined as prime farmland. Please refer to the handout I've given you, which has full descriptions and a chart of the prime farmland in Hamilton County. In the Hamilton County zoning resolutions adopted in 2019 on page seventy-six, there is a section titled Transitional Agricultural District. This section states, "The intent of this district is to recognize the transition between agricultural uses of land and communities to encourage the continued use of that land, which is suitable for agriculture, but limit for land uses that may be a detriment to the efficient pursuit of agricultural production." In Hamilton County's own zoning regulations require the continued use and preservation of land as agricultural production. In this specific situation, we are taking another 160 acres of prime farm ground out of production and covering the concrete and asphalt. I have also included a map that shows the aquifer in the area that we have been referring to within the yellow zone, which shows that there have been declines of ten to twenty-five feet. This map was created by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration titled National Climate Assessment of the Great Plains Obalala Aquifer Drawing Out. Lastly, I am very concerned about what kind of precedent we are setting here. What's to keep other larger corporations from taking advantage of our water resources in the future if we allow this one? How many more industrial facilities do we want in Hamilton County using our limited aquifer? I urge you to please look at the map that I provided you showing the serious declines to the aquifer throughout Texas, Oklahoma, and Kansas, and realize that we may be going down the same path. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, I'm Gail Harnes, Battery Man. I live across the street, 200 South Eighth Street. I have my own well, it's not really deep. I'm very concerned that this may cause me to have to drill a deeper well. I also am concerned that, do we know how much water the city of Aurora uses? All these wells are registered in the county, do we know how much water the wells drilled are used, and how much is that compared to what they're going to use? It really concerns me because the water is a very limited quantity. After Lewis and Clark did their expedition to the west, the government had a person do a study of the water, and this was way back when, and I can't remember his name, but he said that eventually between the Mississippi River and the mountains, we are going to run out of water. It does concern me, it's a very valuable commodity. And another question is, if this plant goes in and produces ammonia, is it going to help our farmers by getting the lower price? And make it better for us? Thank you.
I'm Justin Elch, 1512 Eighth Street, Aurora. I farm with my dad right east of where this is going to be proposed to go in. My biggest concern is there's never been any water use permitted of this size in ever big blue. As Ruth mentioned, you know, the last five years, we're not included in the study, where we pump a lot more water. What's going to happen if this drought continues and we see farmers going to allocation, but industrial be limited to a hundred percent of the previous three years' use, which is what the current rules say? So I guess I'm concerned that Synergen may draw down more water than what they're saying, and we have an issue, and it's going to affect farmers more than it's going to affect them if allocation goes in due to the current rules at the big blue. The other thing that concerns me is Synergen permit calls for this large substation to be built south of their plant. Who's paying for this to go in? Is the power company paying for it and passing the rights on to us? So all the residents in Hamilton County have to pay more for our domestic electricity use, our irrigation well electricity use? You know, who's going to pay for these transmission lines to be upgraded? I don't see this as a benefit to our community. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Marcella Swall.
Turn the mic on, push it all the way up.
Okay, I'm Marcella Swall, I live at 1305 West Stell Road. I'm just outside of the three-mile radius that they were talking about, water drawn at them. I'm concerned about my house level, I'm also concerned about if they could send water back in, is that going to contaminate my water? The other thing is, do you want to just send this water down to meet the creek or the Lincoln Creek, the wastewater? I mean, the NRD says they can't do anything with it, and I find that kind of strange because if we run irrigation water off our fields, we get in trouble. Also, I've noticed that the Beavers, this is a little off the subject, but I've noticed that the Beavers are building bigger and higher dams, which to me indicates a dry summer this year. And I also have friends out in south or northwest Kansas, they have to decide whether they're going to irrigate a quarter of a circle or half of a circle in order to raise a crop anymore, because the well water is so limited. So that's all I have to say.
My name is Curtis Jung, and I hail to you all from North Dakota. And you're wondering why in the heck I'm here? I'm down here on other matters, and I have friends here involved in this in Hamilton County. I read the fifty-six page report, and there are a lot of questions that I have, and I'm going to address a few of those for this council commission, excuse me, Madam Chair, I should have addressed you. Big concern I have is also the water. I would love to see the study that was done, as a reservoir engineer, I would love to see that study. Somebody just answered my question, I've been sitting here asking, has there ever been this big of a drawdown in the area? I'm dealing with so much of this green, 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 and it's not the green, green grass at home, it's green this, green that, green everything, and I'm dealing with it up in North Dakota. As a natural gas expert and coming from the fossil fuel industry, that doesn't make me against anything green. But we also have a green anhydrous ammonia facility going in, substantially larger than this. We have a huge carbon capture project going in, we have direct air capture going in, and I've been called on to help landowners that are the ones in the path of all of this, and it's not just where the Eastmans for all of this are being, or the land that's being sold, the beneficiaries, if you will, that are getting the moolah, moolah. But I mean, we went to a meeting here in December that was put on by a lot of our politicians that are for a lot of this green stuff. And at the very end of it, we were told that, you know, we have to sacrifice for the greater good. Now, we're dealing with CO2 extremely dangerous, anhydrous ammonia, of course, it's a little lighter than air, but if you have a humid morning and you have fog, that's going to drip pretty close to the ground and can be pretty lethal and affliction also. Emergency response needs to be looked at and make sure that your county is not paying for emergency response costs that could be associated with this, that your county's not paying for increased road repair, that's from these heavy trucks, that your county citizens are not being put at risk for traffic. Let me talk about the power. Your power down here is provided by the Southwest Power Pool. I'm dealing with an issue, same power pool, you look at it, runs all the way up mining, it's crypto mining data center that came, like all these other projects, out of state people, a lot of foreign investment, and of course, we're the ones that all have to suffer for it. So this thing comes into North Dakota. Guess what our electric rates have been doing? Like never before. This thing is using two hundred and sixty megawatts. I have an article that I can actually share with anybody here that was published in December talking about the shortfall that's going to happen, winter of twenty-three, twenty-four, if we have a normal winter in peak conditions. Southwest Power Pool that serves you all short eight to five hundred megawatts. MISO that feeds right next to Southwest Power Pool short sixteen thousand megawatts. Well, I would say by good fortune, but I don't really see a good fortune because you didn't have to call off a turnip truck to know that we are in a drought. North Dakota, all the way down, I've traveled extensively the last three months through every state from North Dakota down through Texas and all over, it is dry as a popcorn bar. And this aquifer that you're talking about, I was, again, I will study this Ogallala, whatever, however you pronounce it, aquifer, but I'm guessing it's recharged from the mountains somewhere. But we could be entering a period that you all could not experience where these irrigation pivot irrigators that we see zillions of near the biggest corn producing irrigation states and counties around here, but we could have irrigators going on and drawdowns of this reservoir that we haven't seen in a long time. One of the things I keep talking about up north and all of what we're dealing with is the unintended consequences. I hear all the benefits, the home builders, the city, hey, we got money, we're getting all the benefit, that's great. But then who are the ones nearby all of this that are suffering the impact? That's what's happened in our country. As long as it's benefiting me, I'm sorry, you know, you have to pay a little bit of the price. But thank you, and this is what's wrong. That is somehow I grew up in the sixties and seventies. We actually cared about our neighbors and tried not to do things that would be detrimental to them. So the water and the power are two things, and they said they're going to possibly put in a gas-fired power generation station. But this idea that Nevada, Nebraska Power has approved this thing, I'm telling you, this is going to impact all of your electric rates, mark my word, because it's happening to us in North Dakota and eastern Montana, and it's going to happen to you all here. So I think that's the main thing I have for you. I'm kind of neutral on this, but one of the things, when you read the fifty-six pages, Reagan said, trust but verify. I'm asking all of you to do your homework and for the citizens here, and actually for these folks who need to have a better project, ask the questions, do the research, trust but verify everything you read. And I'd love to see that water report, by the way. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman. I'm Kurt Friesen, twenty-two oh nine East Southern Road, Henderson. So I live just on the eastern or southeastern edge of the county. This issue here is one of those, so I'll give you a little bit of history. I served a number of years in the Evervee Blue NRD. I was part of the group that set our groundwater regulations and really the large water user study that we currently have implemented in Evervee Blue. So again, we, I guess your job is really not to look at whether or not the water use by the NRD has the authority to look at water use in our state, and I think they've done a really good job of implementing this. They have denied large water uses in the past if it shows a bad impact on the aquifer. And so they're not afraid to deny permits, and they do study this, they do look at the hydrology of the area, the geologic formations, and I do trust their ability to set that large water use requirement for those permits. We are in a drought. We've probably not experienced a drought quite like this in a few years, but as an ag producer, we use less water all the time. We have switched to pivots. We have conserved lots of water, and I think we can do an even better job down the road. But we have to remember as farmers and ag producers and irrigators that Nebraska has what they call correlative rights, it's share and share alike. And one thing in our discussions on water policy in the years past has been that if we are going to deny job creation or economic development opportunities, and we're going to say, no, you can't have that water, that is, that's not how the state works, that's not how we should work. We are continuously losing farmers in this area. Our farms are consolidating, our kids are moving away. We need job creation. This to me, you want to look at strictly as that, it's job creation. We're going to be able to bring some people back to work at these facilities. And you can say it could be any facility, I don't care what kind of job creation we have here, this just happens to be fertilizer manufacturing, which as an ag producer, we've talked about for years, trying to get more production manufactured in the U.S. rather than import in foreign countries. So I look at this and I think of, you know, all the data mining that we talked about, electricity rates, you know, I think too our electric rates are going to go up. But we're also putting in these data centers which really don't create any jobs, and all they do is data mining and Bitcoin, blockchain, those types of things. They don't do as much good as what a manufacturing plant is creating jobs for. And I think the, use the zoning board, I think you've looked at all the issues, you're looking at this, whether or not it fits the area, whether or not it's an industrial area, it's located on a highway, those are the things I think that should concern you. I think the water issue, but the NRD will take care of those issues as they address. Again, we are going to, in the long term, have to address all their electricity manufacturers. Me and Mr. Levy have been on opposite sides of numerous things in the past, but this is one thing we agree on here is manufacturing, I think, has been for rural areas. I've complained when I served time in Lincoln that all of our economic development has been focused on the eastern part of the state. This is finally giving us an opportunity to create some jobs, and I think they're going to be good, well-paying jobs. So when you start to weigh whether or not we want to do this or not do this, first of all, I fully support this, whether it be probably any other manufacturer or not, I'd probably support that too. I think the most important thing we look at is job creation, and I think the rest of it, the NRDs will take care of the water use portions of it, the electric utilities are going to, they're going to look out for our electric use here. So those are the things that I look at, and I've been hearing the concerns back here. But again, if we don't start to create jobs in this area, we're going to continue to see smaller schools, smaller tax base, and we're going to be paying the price. Thank you.
Can you hear me? My name is Anthony Bohaty, sixteen eighteen Road, eleven fifty York, Nebraska, six eight four six seven. I'm the chairman and members of Planning and Zoning Committee. And my name is Anthony Bohaty, and I'm here today on behalf of myself as a Hamilton County farmer, Hamilton County landowner and stakeholder. I want to disclose, I am a current board member of the Evervee Blue NRD. I am not speaking on behalf tonight. I have not been asked to speak on them in order, I authorized to. And nor do any of my views being presented tonight represent their reasons and opinions, so I'm here on my own. Speaking is Anthony Bohaty. I live in York County. My wife Carmen and I have a long history of our extended families living and farming in Sioux York and Hamilton County. My wife Carmen and I have four school-aged children, and my hope is that when they grow up, they will continue to live and work in this community and have safe and plentiful groundwater available to them, just like I've had for most of my life. For these reasons, I felt compelled to come forward today and to try to protect our natural resources for my children and for all the other future generations. It is vital that our natural resources be used in a way that they are not wasted or used purely for quick profit of an outside foreign entity or for the future promises of increased tax dollars and new jobs, all based on our improvement, government subsidized process and product. We must be cautious not to overuse our groundwater at a rate that may exceed the ability of the aquifers to naturally recharge. Water depreciation and modeling done by the state and the NRDs is not an exact science. Nobody can be certain and know what the long-term effect of a large water withdrawal in a concentrated area will do to the availability of our local water supply. These concerns have weighed very heavy on my mind the last few weeks, and that is why I've come to you tonight to voice these concerns. I am very concerned that the Synergy Green Plant will build a facility that would require up to three billion gallons of groundwater pumped daily from the Ogallala Aquifer. As in the illustration, that is the same quantity of water that is required to apply nine inches of water annually to forty-four hundred acres of farmland. It's a lot. Synergy Green is proposing withdrawing all that water within a small area with four wells to be located on, from what I understand, one hundred and sixty acres of farmland. The Capet Ethanol Plant, which is about three miles from there from the proposed plant, has an average daily water use of one point two million gallons per day. The highest company has an average of thirty-seven eight hundred. Irrigation from crops occurs approximately five months out of the year. Synergy will be pumping all year, every day without limitation, as long as they do not exceed their permitted amount. The permitted amount will only, or will be allowed until they develop a three-year pumping history. If the area would become water allocated, they would be allowed to pump the full amount of their permit, if no water history has yet been developed. Once they have a pumping history, they would be allowed to currently pump the full amount of their history, even if agriculture was under an allocation. As a farmer in Hamilton County, the allocation of water for irrigation is becoming closer to reality as each year has passed. I am very concerned about the declining level of the water, local water aquifer. The spring two thousand twenty-three groundwater level was still six point six eight feet from the allocation trigger level. From what I understand, it fell about two point two one feet from the spring two thousand twenty-two to the spring two thousand twenty-three measurement. Now, what's interesting about that is that I believe the allocation use or the amount reported was about maybe seven to eight inches, and models have shown that the aquifer shouldn't fall, wouldn't pump that, so that really makes me question what models do. There is no allocation for the two thousand twenty-four year. We will not know until about two thousand twenty-five until the spring two thousand twenty-four level, if it is completed. If agriculture goes into an allocation due to the decline in water level, the large water users will not be allocated as the rules currently set, from what I've read, as long as they do not exceed their history or the permit request. Things I want for you to think about. Does anyone truly understand how much the water table could have fallen in this area of the proposed plant if they had been operating the last three years during the current Nebraska drought pattern we are in? Would we already be in allocation? Why is an outside entity allowed to come into Hamilton County and potentially waste water by releasing or recharging or whatever things we're going to do, they won't say, when we as a community are concerned about our fallen water table? Do we want to take this risk as a community for the hope of economic development, new jobs and tax dollars? I too want those, but at what cost? And if we do, like I said, at what cost to our environment? As a stakeholder of the community, I do not want this area to be faced with the same problems they are now seeing in southwest Kansas, eastern Colorado. The less water we remove from the aquifer, the more likely we will reserve this resource for the future. Considering, I personally am not against this project.
May I finish?
I'm still asking questions and collecting information, but I challenge this group to think hard, move slowly, and take your time before making a decision. Thank you.
Second, as we close the public hearing, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passed. Item number four, discussion action, conditionally used command for Synergy Green Energy to construct a ammonia distribution facility western Aurora northeast quarter in section three T-ten R-seven W in the Transitional Agricultural District. Are there any questions from the planning commission on the amendment? Would also like to disclose that if anybody has any expertise from anyone that has spoken, please announce that now. I did receive text messages from Andrew Joyce, a messenger from Tina Oswald. I did reach out to the newspaper for the link for the information that I requested from the last meeting at the Brimstone Center. Did anybody else get anything from anybody that was, it's not going to change my opinion on how I feel on what's going on, but did anybody else get any information from anybody? You received one from Tina Oswald as well, Justin? Did you receive anything?
I did, from Iris Bergen, but I thought my wife was bringing it.
We don't need it, we just need to know that it's been presented to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions on the amendment from the planning commission?
When is the appropriate time for us to ask questions? Is it this moment or is it now?
Right now, we can ask questions, yes.
Yeah, I have a question for John Hewitt. Can you, can you give me an honest answer in regard to the ownership of this company? I want you to go back to, you have subsidiaries, you have Synergy. Who is the parent companies? I mean, let's get down to the brass tacks, who owns the company?
So Synergy Green Energy is a U.S. company. It's registered in the state of Texas.
Turn the mic on.
It is on. Okay. So Synergy Green Energy is a U.S. company. It's registered in the state of Texas. It's actually in Houston. It's a new company, and they opened an office just about a year ago in Texas. It's a family-owned business, and the current generation of Anthony Bambini, the owners, are all here in the U.S. They are Indian origin, but they are all U.S. citizens and happy for quite some time, and you know, their future and their investment is here in the, in the U.S. So they are a U.S. company, U.S. citizens. The Synergy is a holding subsidiary of the Skirron Group, which is owned by that same family, who also have members who are in India. But Synergy Green Energy is a U.S. registered company, and it has all its operations here in the U.S.
So in regard to that, if they are a, did you call them a subsidiary of?
They are part of a holding group called the Skirron Group. It is a U.S. registered company.
The holding group is a, where is the home of the holding group?
The holding group is headquartered in India. But you know, can you explain to me what is the concern with that?
Mr. County Attorney, that is my understanding that the permit has no basis in the nationality of the holding company. County has no authority to discriminate against applicants. Would you address that?
If the companies, legal entities are lawfully incorporated in the United States and can't do business, it doesn't matter. do business, it doesn't matter where the shareholders are. Think about a company that's registered with the New York Stock Exchange. There could be people anywhere in the world owning stock in that company and it's still a US company.
Greg, do you have other questions?
This question would be for, I don't know. Why do we not have this water study? I see, I see nothing in my information that tells me the impact upon the farms in the immediate vicinity. Why, why do I not see that?
We submitted the study to NRD. They are the authority dealing with that. The study is available to anybody through the NRD and we did explain that to the planning commission quite some time ago and we've explained that to the public during our open hearings. So, the model is at NRD. Everybody is welcome to have access to that model, contact the NRD. There are people who know how to use it, that's.
I have a question for Tina Oswald. Tina, we have to understand, part of our job is to understand the impact upon the local, the immediate area. You identified yourself as immediate and immediate area of this project. Can you, can you tell me how you, how you see this a potentially is injurious to your property?
Well, several ways. One, the traffic that will be on L Road, that's the road that we travel, is one way. The other way that it could be injurious is our property values if we have to be allocated with our watering and our production is not what it can be. So, that would be another way. It would also be injurious with the draining and runoff if it goes through our 40 acres. So, those are a few of the ways that it would be injurious to our immediate property, as well as our household house. We have two households actually that are within, if you look at where we live, we had built a house and then just recently remodeled and moved into the original farmhouse. So, we actually have a couple of personal household wells that are right there. So, that would be another way.
What's your comment about having to drive by it? Can you explain that?
To drive by it? Yes. I, living in the country, I would much rather drive by in the country and look at country landscape instead of a commercial landscape. In some of the regulations for the planning and zoning for here in Hamilton County, it's said that the transitional use was not supposed to be for large commercial entities and that to me, this is a large commercial entity and I would be driving by that every day.
Are there any other members that have any questions? Let's let everybody else speak and then we can add one if we can. We had a discussion about wastewater. Where is that going? We didn't ever discuss where that wastewater is going to go.
So, wastewater, I think we have explained this to the best of our ability on a few occasions, but the answer to that is that there are three options for wastewater. All three options are under evaluation, nothing has been decided at this time. But the options are, first of all, that the water could go to city water and we've already been in contact with Aurora City Water and talked about what that could mean in terms of existing infrastructure and potential infrastructure upgrades, you know, how that would be financed, what the rates would be, et cetera. So, so that is still in a relatively early discovery stage. The second option is, is that the wastewater that we produce is actually exceptionally clean. And that wastewater is clean enough that it can be run off to existing bodies of water. There's a, there's a trip, go into creeks and dings in the immediate surrounding area. Just that people, if you can ask the question, why can that water not continue to be reused? It's because it gets to a harmless content that says we can't use it for cooling, so we have to let it run off. And that's, there's about 500,000 gallons of that. And the, the third option is that the water could actually be reinjected back into the ground, but there are issues with that in terms of technical issues and environmental issues. But all three of those options are possible. All three of those options are being evaluated, but you know, no decisions will be made on that, at least until we know that there is, you know, a viable project.
To follow up on the question, where will it go? As a commission member, I'm really challenged to make a decision without knowing that information because everybody is concerned about runoff and about where water will end up. In our drinking water, where will it end up? So, I'm just, I'm just saying, for me, I would have liked to have planned that we knew where it was going to go, instead of, we have three options.
I understand your point and you know, we would like to have more clarity on this too, but you know, we are also waiting for information from different bodies as to what possibilities are, such as you know, Aurora Water also working with us, right? But you know, part of this conditional use permit is, is you can help us understand what choices could be available to us. I think the sensible answer is, is that the, you know, whatever solution we decide upon has to be environmentally friendly. We have to be responsible where it goes and we're also looking at what we can collectively consider to be the most socially responsible and economically beneficial outcome for the project, right? And that doesn't just mean Synergium. The project means in the community and complying with the use permit.
Does anyone else have any questions?
So, I guess my question would be, and I'm not a resident in Aurora itself, but if you guys are saying maybe they're wastewater treatment plant or this or that and you ain't got a plan yet and you said expansion for them, well, I guess my question is, who pays for that? Because the people in Aurora are going to get to your tax dollars and have to pay for it, for you guys' runoff? Is Hamilton County's tax dollar is going to go up because of runoff? I mean, I'm, I'm like other people, I don't think all the ducks are in a row here, kind of hard to make a decision. I mean, I'm not against more jobs and more people coming to our community and sharing it with them, but not knowing where the wastewater is going and the surrounding communities already have a high nitrate and stuff because we don't have enough water coming to us? I mean, my small village or town, we're already trying to figure out what we're doing for a treatment plant, so is this going to affect?
So, I'm going to answer it as fully as I can at the moment, right? Because I don't speak for the Aurora City Water Authorities or anybody in that area. We have had initial meetings and discussions with Aurora. At the present time, they have sufficient capacity in the existing system to take all of the wastewater that we produce if we gave it to them, right? But they, like everybody else, you know, like the Chamber Commerce lady here, et cetera, they're already doing their plan because they're expecting expansion at some stage, whether it's from Synergium or not. So, they're already saying that we have to look to the future and possibly expand. Part of the discussion that they have, that they brought to us is, this is an opportunity for us to improve our existing services and our capacity, right? They've also been looking at, and this was before we ever arrived, at rerouting existing sewers in someone, right? Which would bring numerous benefits that they could tell you about. If we were to participate with them, then it could accelerate that program and it would also, you know, mean that we could share in the capital cost for that. But if we were to do that, then just the same as everybody else, we would expect that we would see rates for that if we would pay our rates, but there would probably be some rate adjustment to make sure that, you know, everything is equitable to everybody at the end of the day, right? But that is for them to decide and you know, they set the rates, they tell us what it is that we have to comply with. And we put all of that into our options to say which is the best solution for this project and this community. So, it's normal business, that's what we will go through.
Just a quick question on, you know, you said you had, you know, multiple third-party people that are looking at, you know, three different options. Do you have, do you have a timeframe on potentially, when is that decision going to be made? As far as what option are you going to go with?
So, it's kind of a iterative process. When we get our conditional use permit, assuming we would be successful, I hope we are getting a conditional use permit, our next stage is to move into detailed engineering of the project because we're still at a relatively early stage. We've done what we call our pre-peat engineering, then we have detailed engineering. That could take many months and water is just part of that. So, it will go backwards and forwards and it could take quite some months before we decide what the final outcome is. But please understand that that is not anything that Synergium does in a dark room on its own. It's, you know, completely interactive because we have to work with Aurora City Water, we have to work with the environmental agencies, et cetera, and comply with their regulations and forward decisions, right? It could take months.
I would assume with that, you would have to probably check up with other local landowners as far as if that water is going to run off down to the creeks and.
Yes, you're quite right. I mean, we can all go just where we want to, right?
Okay. I got a question for the guys that did the hydraulics. How's coming out of news 1941 to 2018? Why didn't you go to current? We've had pretty much three dry years in a row. It's not even on the study.
Yeah, so I'd like to read the full sentence that was referred to and I'll help explain that. I'll start, I'll start a little earlier. First step was to construct a sub-regional model using regional model files supplied by GSI Lardino, which is one of the consultants that worked with Upper Big Blue on developing their regional model and made assistance with the period. The second part of the model development involved creating a steady-state simulation followed by simulation of a transient period from 1941 to 2018 to ensure the model's capability to replicate changing water level conditions in the local aquifer. So, what that means is by simulating over, maybe just a quick math, a bond to 80-year period, we're capturing numerous droughts and numerous wet and dry cycles. And there's really nothing nefarious about the fact that we stopped at 2018. It simply is the last year where water use estimates, in particular from irrigation water use, are available and that was dependent on the NRD's larger model of study. So, we were dependent on how they did that larger model of study and so that's the time period that we had. I think a bigger point on that, we were not just looking at Synergium's water use. The model that we developed, the regional model of this, this area of Upper Big Blue has all of the water uses, all of the significant water uses incorporated into that model. We have to do that in addition to incorporating estimates of local natural recharge to get the model, to simulate the water level increases and water level decreases that are, have been experienced over time. So, I hope that clarifies that. It's just, it's just a data availability issue and it really wouldn't have changed the output of our study at all.
What made your study only go three miles out?
So, the model actually, we actually simulated an area, give me one second. It's kind of hard to see, simulated a, an area, a very large area around this plant. It might be one that shows the three-mile buffer now. But yeah, we went, we went quite a bit farther than three miles out. The reason that we stopped at three miles for looking at individual wells is the regulation. They require us to look specifically at every individual well within that three-mile radius. You know, at about three miles, the drawdowns are in the range of going to three feet. Anywhere further away than three miles, the impact are going to be less.
I kind of just had a little bit of a comment. I don't need anybody to answer a question for me. I'm a little bit familiar with the wastewater treatment plant in Aurora. I do know, first off, we have all this information and it's great. I think it's well put together, but the wastewater just keeps getting me because we've been close to denying a lot of things around here for a lot less problems. So, I know that the wastewater treatment in Aurora does have a computer layout system that tells them exactly how much is going through the facility, how much is, you know, close to being too much or how little it is. I'm surprised that we don't have city administrator numbers that can give us that information. I think that's really easy for them to provide for us, so I'm actually very surprised that Aurora was not able to give those numbers to us for this situation. Water is obviously a big deal. I think it's really sensitive, but I think that the treatment for me is, is one of the biggest things. We have this huge layout here and then basically the water treatment section is just saying we'll get to that when we need to and I don't think that's quite enough information, especially when Aurora has put in this advanced system. They can give us the information right now. We could go out there right now. They could tell us exactly how much wastewater is going through that plant, the numbers, the percentages. They could, I'm pretty sure they can go back ever long we need to. That data is recorded for the city. It's a very sophisticated system is what I'm saying, so I'm just very surprised that we don't have that information. I believe it's very important information that was overlooked on this whole project and I think we kind of got the answers from everybody else's questions.
So, you're quite right. Aurora water facility do know what they can and cannot do, right? What I said was, we had met with them and they had already combed to us that. What I said was we had met with them and they had already complained to us that with their existing facilities, they could handle all of the wastewater if we were to send it their way. And the reaction to this when we initially met is that that would be, would be very welcome by them, right? Partly because it also gives them the opportunity to do all of these system upgrades and rerouting of sewers, etc. But I just want to make sure that you understand that Aurora have already told us that with the existing capacity, they can handle anything that we've taken to them. We are, you know, still waiting to hear back from Aurora following our last meeting on several questions that we had posed to them in terms of capacity and water treatments, etc. So, you know, we're waiting to hear back before we make the next decision.
No, I totally, I totally understand. And I'm not saying that you're trying to hide anything or anything like that. I'm just knowing how Aurora City Council and the city administrator and health is working there, think that that information could have been provided in a data or numerical setting. I'm not saying you're lying at all, totally believe you. But I just, I think we need that hard data for me personally, I guess, to know exactly where we started.
Just a quick question and then I'm done. Does the project's completion or viability depend, depend on state or federal funding to be finished?
In regards to the roads, I believe that I read that you're going to do a traffic study by chance and that you're going to put in turning lanes and such like, such as that. On Highway thirty-four, I know that is a busy road as it is already. You've got imes down the road, you've got CF industries, you've got everything there. Who's going to be responsible for paying for that as well?
So we will work together with Nebraska Department of Transportation, Hamilton County Transportation Authorities, etc. To agree what is the right traffic management practice. We're prepared today for the upgrades to the county roads, etc. We're trying to keep all of the turnoffs of Highway thirty-four into the plant to be absolute minimum. And this is, we've already had a discussion together with planning and zoning committee and the plan that you sort of put up earlier. We've already adjusted based on their inputs, right? But I think everybody, if they have a chance to look at that plan, we're talking about turning off Highway thirty-four onto County Road L. It's really a very short distance. It's not on the board now, right? It's really a very short distance. We're talking about traveling on, on that county road. It actually pointed out. It's not showing on that particular road. I'm still sure everybody, yeah? Okay. So this is the plant and Malt is at the top of the screen. So the Ime Smart is just over here. This is Highway thirty-four. There are two entrances into the plant. One is here, one is here. This entrance will go onto thirty-four. So the main route for product traffic, if you like, is here just off County Road. And so trucks will come in here through the loading bay circle and go out this way. So we're really only talking about a very small length of the county road that is impacted. And if everybody could also try and remember that the vast majority, and by that I mean ninety percent of our production will go by, will exit from pipeline under the road into the new style pipeline. So it's only two months of the year that we expect to have truck traffic. And that will be approximately ninety-six hundred trucks a month in the spring, one month in the spring, one month and four, four trucks a day. Really, very minimal.
Okay. I have two other questions in regards to the lighting. Is the exterior lighting going to downcast with opaque or translucent shielding? So there's not a glare? On the exterior lighting, downcast with opaque or translucent shielding? So there won't be no glare? Is that going to be put in or what kind of lighting is they put in around there? Okay. And then just say happens, say twenty years from now that the plant is no longer using, I mean, it's shut down completely. What happens with everything that is there? Is it just going to sit on that hundred sixty acres as an ISO or do they take care of it? Do you know?
David, do you know how to answer that? I mean, if you follow the conditional use requirement requirements as to decommission it, right?
It would just follow what the county requires.
But if you don't, we don't just walk away and leave a rusting up?
Okay. Any other questions for the planning commission?
You have a plan for four generations, you said. Well, okay, it's a little bit taking off of what she said. But what was the plan after the fourth generation?
If we keep, if we can keep going, why wouldn't we? So, you know, we're just going to go as long as we possibly can. You know, there's a lifetime that this plant thinks eventually we're out. There's a design life that we have at this plant, you know, which we see, we prepare and mace it, etc., will keep us going for at least, you know, fifty, sixty years. But hopefully we'll just continue on beyond that if we can. And who knows, perhaps we all love this thing and, you know, rules are and everything around it. You know, we just, we just keep going, right? We can expand.
So my question comes down, several comments that were made earlier. So in regards to the three possible, we're talking wastewater here, obviously. So the three possible ways to mitigate your waste, two of the options, one of them being, you mentioned the runoff will be clean enough or your, your waste will be clean enough to use as runoff. But the next option was to re-inject the water. And forgive me, I'm not super keen on the process, but if it's, if it's not good enough to be re-injected, if the water is at the, is that your waste is not good enough to be re-injected? Or is it the process of re-injecting that's, that would cause the environmental impact? Can you clarify?
Yes, thank you for asking. So we may be getting caught a little bit in semantics here. So there's three ways of disposing of wastewater. One is goes to the city, as we discussed. The other one is the runoff. Or the third one is injecting it into the ground back into the aquifer, right? But I think your question when you said injecting was us actually, instead of us having water runoff and go to drain at all, is why can we not just continuously loop it around, right?
My concern is that there was a comment made that injecting it back into the aquifer has negative impacts, but runoff is clean enough to go into the runoff.
No, no, I don't, that's not, I get that impression and I apologize. It's not what I'm saying. What I said is, is it's clean enough to runoff. It's also clean enough to put into the ground. But I'm saying it's not, it's not as simple just putting it in the ground as you were thinking, right? You still need to have, pumping it in there, you still need to have certain conditions met. It's still an engineering process that has to be gone through to be evaluated, whether it's sensible or viable. So, you know, we compare that to the other options as well. But the water is clean enough to go back in the ground. It's really very clean.
Okay. That was the, that was the point of clarification. Thanks.
Thank you.
Would you drink it? Well, the other question, I, it probably has nothing to do with change this. What is the subsidy that the federal government is putting to? I understand it's three times. It's not economically the way it is without the federal government in this.
So there are, there are very many federal subsidies available. One federal subsidy is on hydrogen. But that federal subsidy is tied to the hydrogen being green. And, you know, hydrogen becomes green if it is made with renewable energy that meets certain conditions, right? Our plan is to buy our power through MPPD and SPPD, as I've mentioned. So we're buying it and we're paying the state for that. And at the present time, MPPD, which is part of Southwest Power Hall, is sixty-five percent nuclear, which is clean, but it's not green, doesn't qualify. So there is some green energy available, but it's probably spoken for and it also comes at a premium. And so, you know, if we were to buy that, it would increase our costs. And, you know, we have to have that green energy then to qualify it as a subsidy. Will we take advantage of that subsidy? The answer is, is if we can, absolutely. But we can't just, you know, turn up here because, and do what we like because there isn't the amount of green energy available tomorrow for us to be able to get hold of that subsidy. So it's not anything that we can, you know, take to the bank. But we would certainly, if we forget it, we would certainly take it. I'm sure any of us would do that.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Just clarification. It said in your information, no wind or solar energy at this time. Well, if we approve this conditional use, how will we know if that will come at a later time?
So any additional use like that, a wind farm, a solar farm at this site or anywhere in Hamilton County, would have required the developer of that, whether it's Synergy or anybody else, to go through a process just like this? And the county, just like that, with this use, would have discretion to approve or deny or condition that use? That would be subject to public notice, public hearings, applications, everything that this is subject to. So you would have lots of knowledge of it and lots of opportunity for input as the planning commission, as the county, etc.
Mr. Levy, do you want to do any rebuttal?
Thank you for the opportunity. You know, I think, I appreciate all the questions from the commission because that tells us what your questions are and what you're thinking about and what we may not have addressed so far. I think, you know, John and Jim have done a great job of answering the questions. I don't know that we need to belabor it. The one thing I would add that hasn't been said yet is that, as stated in our application, the evidence in the record before you, the application, the testimony, all of the other information that you have, what you have tonight, demonstrates that this land use, and this is really the question with all respect, before this commission, as a legal matter. The questions before this commission are, does this proposed use, is it consistent with the Hamilton County Comprehensive Plan? The information shows that it is. And does it meet the requirements of the Hamilton County zoning regulations? And again, the evidence shows that it does. I think John Shepherd from Marvin Plating Consultants may have some additional remarks to that effect. I know they've studied it. They may have findings of fact and conditions of approval. And conditions of approval are certainly within this body's purview, again, as a legal matter and with all respect. That's why it's called a conditional use, because a conditional use depends on the circumstances. And it may require certain conditions of approval that respond to those circumstances. And so we fully understand and anticipate that. We look forward to working with the county to satisfy any conditions of approval should this be approved. But again, I want to be very clear, the question before you, again, with all respect, but as a legal matter, is a very narrow question. And that question or those questions are, does this comply with, is it consistent with your comprehensive plan? And does it meet the requirements of your zoning regulations? If the answer to those two questions is yes, based on evidence in the record, not based on opinion, based on evidence in the record, then as a legal matter, you should vote to recommend approval of this to the county board. And we, again, appreciate your time and really to appreciate all the questions. And I would respectfully ask that you vote to recommend this to the county board. We understand there's time between now and then. We've been taking notes of the questions and things that you feel are unanswered. I'm sure that the minutes of this would go to the county board. And we will work between now and then diligently to answer as many of those questions as we could before that time. So thank you. And again, we appreciate your vote to recommend approval of this to the county board. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to stand here. We've been in the city for a while. Again, my name is John Shepherd. I'm a senior planner with Marvin Plating Consultants. That my boss, Keith Marvin, worked with Hamilton County on drafting your comprehensive plan and drafting your zoning regulations. And those have changed and grown in context and every day we learn a new thing. And this, this time we're learning about, about green hydrogen as it is. Members of the planning commission should have received a report I gave to Hillary Beck on March fourth, that we were engaged to review the project, look at some of the context behind it, and then do an analysis of elements of the comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations that apply to this case. That this is a project that's both very exciting, this is really cutting-edge things that there are, the new hydrogen hubs in other states. And on the other hand, it's ammonia. Hamilton County farmers know about ammonia. You also know about renewable energy, ethanol, biodiesel's not too far away. In my report, I mentioned ammonia is not a biofuel, but there are people who are going to make it a biofuel. Whether that fits in the context of this specific question, Mr. Levy's questions, those are your two most important questions. However, to put that in context, a conditional use is a use that may need conditions to mitigate its impacts on the communities and specifically on the neighbors. So within that, I talked about many of the exciting positive things with economic development and energy and natural resources. And also some of the concerns that were brought up this evening with prime farm land. And the water use, in your zoning regulations there, I found a hundred and fifty-eight different references to the word water. Under Nebraska, the Nebraska regulatory system, you have a cooperative relationship with the NRD and it's their purview to issue the permit. You can express your concerns. You may have concerns that could be expressed in conditions. But really, in your zoning regulation, you don't have requirements for water permits. You do have requirements for wastewater treatment. And that may be a situation where there's... And that may be a situation where this application may have, may have been a bit early. But you have the opportunity to condition your concerns with wastewater. Um, I brought up a number of zoning issues in review, which were your packet. Then I'll jump straightforward to the conditional use criteria, which are on your findings, that, that we made recommendations in, that these are based on our best reading of what's in your comp plan, your zoning, what are best practices on similar facilities, not that there are a lot of similar facilities out there right now, but based on your practical experience, both with cooperative fertilizer plants and with renewable energy facilities. That, that the 12 recommendations are on there. The first recommendation is that in our opinion, the proposed development needs a definition of an agricultural cooperative production distribution facility, which Hillary brought up at the very, very beginning of their hearing a couple hours ago. That, that we had a recommendation that if you were concerned about the specific zoning district, that you may want to recommend concurrent amendment of the land use plan to a flex zone. Uh, but the fact is, this is a listed use in the transitional agricultural zone. This is simply something you could consider if you wanted to, if you're concerned about the base zoning. But frankly, you wouldn't treat it any differently in a flex zone or in a TA zone. It, and we have flex zone way across the street with the existing facilities. Hillary, help me out here. Yeah, and I am sitting those other ones up there. Plus the fact that you're within less than a mile of an international ammonia pipeline that goes all the way to Gulf of Mexico. The third recommendation, excuse me, dealt with the, the road situation. And, and I want to acknowledge that the applicants did redesign the site from the initial application to meet concerns with road and with, with industrial buffers. That my suggested condition, dedicate, design, and construct south Elrod as a primary site access, as provided in section 823 of the zoning regulations. Basically, I'd suggest you let the county highway superintendent set those requirements. That's his job. That, number four, align proposed access on Highway 34 with the existing access, way north of the right way. Hopefully Nebraska D O T would catch that, but sometimes they don't. Um, the, uh, number five, applicant should identify proposed construction, hold it with the county highway superintendent's approval. We don't want haul rounds coming and digging up your, your gravel roads. Um, the, uh, number six, applicant shall maintain conformity with the performance standards in section 817 of the zoning regulation for proper navigation for fire hazards, as may be required by the local fire chief. Um, I understand that applicants have been talking to the local fire department. Uh, again, your local, um, your local fire department, your county emergency manager, your regional emergency management has experience with ammonia, they have experience with hazardous materials, with potentially flammable materials. But there was, it brought up that, um, we, it may be in your interest to condition that, in case people forget down the road. Uh, we also suggest that the, uh, that the application offer have tour and training for not just the local fire department, but any of those who may respond by mutual aid. And I'm sure that's part of, part of your operations anyways. Um, the, uh, number eight, applicant shall maintain conformity with standards in section 818 of zoning reg- regulations for above-ground storage tanks. There are two storage tanks that are different than our usual ones, but that's again stating. Within the condition, we're just stating, hey, let's make sure we remember. The other thing with the conditions that you recommend, hopefully in, in some day, in the next five or 10 years, you will all have recruited your replacements on this board, but they won't necessarily remember what our discussion was here tonight. Conditions on the CUP will be preserved for future, for, for future reference. So they don't remember what we talked about tonight. Uh, the number nine, applicant shall provide proof of approval appropriate federal regulatory authority prior to connection facility to the ammonia pipeline. Uh, the county has no authority to regulate the interstate pipeline, but we can ask for documentation so that we know what's going on in our area. Um, but for the most part, we can't do much about pipelines. The, uh, number 10, require a stereo lighting to be downcast with opaque or translucent shielding so as not to cast glare off the site. That's just good business practice, that, that you don't want to waste light, but also that, that we don't want uh, security lights glaring out onto the U.S. highway. You'd think that people would know better, but I, I drive by places at night when I'm out for work and the, the security lights are off the site, not on the site. But maybe I'm just getting old. My classmate don't work like the U.S. The, um, number 11, require a detailed site plan with the zoning permit prior to construction scale sufficient to confirm all structures need setbacks. Sealed by Nebraska Professional Community Registered Airway. This is a two-step process and it's always a bit of, of how much detail do we want now versus what comes later? The applicant is only authorized for what is part of the record from this approval. If they decide to change their mind later, they have to come back and start. So they, they want to keep it, it's understandable business practice. We don't want them to go to final engineering and they say, oh, we need to move something. But we just want to be very clear here, when they come to Hillary for, for their final site plan, zoning permit, that it reflects what's in this and that also that a P E and Olson, whoever you use for your local work, has to be registered in Nebraska. Um, and then a, a 12th recommendation, simply, simply acknowledges any modification to site benefit of the project must be approved by the zoning administrator. Things happen, things, things get shifted, but at a certain point, if it gets shifted enough, it's going to be up to your zoning administrator if it has to come back for your review. Um, I think that I may have jumped over the one with the wastewater. Um, yeah, number seven, applicant should submit wastewater treatment plans to the planning commission for approval prior to application. This is not a typical recommendation, but especially given the concerns that people have had. That frankly, the, the state of Nebraska, the EPA, are the ones that are going to have their feet on weight there, are going to hold their feet to the fire on wastewater. But rather than a denial, you maybe want to say, hey, um, we're going to give this a conditional, conditional use approval, a conditional approval, but we want to see more specifically what's going to happen with that wastewater. This is not a typical recommendation, it's frankly, it's not, it's not, I'm sure it's not a preference for the applicant or for the planning commission, but it may be a way to deal with that issue without putting the entire project off track. Frankly, it'd be up to the county board to decide if they want to deal with it like that or not. So, Madam Chair, did you have any other questions?
Um, I don't. Does anybody else have questions?
Am I allowed to ask a question of the participants?
Of what participants? Who are you referring to?
Okay. Uh, well, I, I didn't, in a way, I don't appreciate that I wasn't recognized with my hand up. So that process, can we reopen? Can we reopen? Can we have a motion to reopen it?
To open what?
Um, the question time again.
The question time is still there. It was blown over his. But you guys, but you close the questions, I'm sorry. No, it's fine. All right, Debbie.
I have a question for Curtis Jung. Um, you have, Curtis, you, you expressed to us that you're in the same power pool that we are. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then, and we have power pools called, what's it called again?
Southwest Power Pool, SPP.
Okay. Can you, can you elaborate on the law of, your experience with the large power users?
Yes. Um, I can share with you what has affected the entire SPP power pool and what we've experienced in North Dakota. So, we ended up adding this data center, very large power user. Right now, 260 megawatts, it was done four years ago roughly, came online. They want to grow to 700 megawatts. That's not happening yet, but given their 260 megawatts into the pool, the rates for all of North Dakota customers have been increasing. And one of our largest utility companies called Montana Dakota Utilities have been due resources, filed a complaint with the F B R C, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, because of the impact that that large user has had on the SPP pool and the wheelie to wholesale power. Wholesale power is, their customers are suffering. This is all new stuff in the last month and a half or two. You can Google empty use filing to perk. I don't know how much power this facility is going to use because of the 56 pages, I couldn't find it. But I did find that they said due to degradation of their, um, process, their, their power use is going to go up 23.5 megawatts a year. In 10 years, that's 23, or it's going to go up 2.3, I'm sorry, 2.35. In 10 years, that's 23.5 megawatts. And then they do a refurbishing, whatever, and it goes back down. But this hydrogen doesn't look like it's going to be green. And it's not going to be, uh, your power, um, Nebraska power allocating green just to this facility like what was told to the public that the Super Bowl ran all on green power. Now, this is not something, Nevada power, which is primarily coal power. They didn't just say, okay, for the Super Bowl, we're going to take all that green power. By the way, when that green power jumped off its wind, the wind wasn't blowing, the sun wasn't going either during the Super Bowl. So that's sort of, uh, the, the kind of thing that happens. You know, um, figures don't lie, but liar's sure figure. Petroleum engineer out of college I worked for, that was the first thing he taught me. So I'm just telling you that this isn't, look, if it's green hydrogen, they're going to be taking power off the SPP pool, which is, who serves your Nebraska power? So what's happened in North Dakota? We have significant reliability issues. We have, my neighbor put in an $8,000 backup generator running on natural gas. We're trying to decide whether to do ours own. Reliability is one thing, but you know what's happened? In 18 years of owning this home in rural, Broly County, I've had minimal increases. All of a sudden, May of 2023, a grid capacity charge, all doing this SPP stuff. 15% increase in rates. Guess what's coming in May of 24, send right in the letter, 8% increase. So I'm, if, this is my world of energy, natural gas. I email the row under co-op. How long is this going to continue and what are you doing? Well, we're told by our wholesale power, wholesale power suppliers, which is SPP and MISO, you can expect another two years at least of increases. So I'm already at 23% to our house. By two, two years from now, I'll be 50%. So Basin Electric Power Cooperative serves all the R E Cs. They're building a $1 billion natural gas-fired generation facility at Williston, which will send power to the SPP. Uh, it's on the list to find out if us real electric people are going to be picking up that cost. You know why they're building a billion-dollar natural gas-fired generation facility? Because a cryptic mining data center wants to go to 700 megawatts. And our rates are going like this. I'm telling you all, water is huge, but this thing, this facility gets online and then all of a sudden, uh, yep, no problem. The water, this wastewater plant can handle all the wastewater. I heard somebody say, well, we got 40 lots we're going to develop. I'm sorry, we're capacity, now we have to expand the plant, so everybody, all the residents of Aurora are going to have to pay. Because they're existing, they were here first. I mean, this is the kind of stuff that goes on. We, as consumers, always end up paying. We end up with the crap falling down right here and out-of-state investors are coming in and we, we're, we're ending up paying. And guess what? Our property taxes are going up, second year in a row. How does that work? I mean, uh, get ready, that's all I'm saying. Do you have any more questions, Greg?
I did want to mention, um, I see a lot of people have their phones out, maybe playing solitaire, I don't know. Um, the open meetings app prevents you from using your phone during a public meeting. So, everybody's on the other system because I think you're going to be left.
I'd like to respond to that. Thank you for asking. If we all had a lot more time, I could speak to plans and outfits, but unfortunately, I think the, you've just been, done a great disservice. You've compared a lot of information that does not hang together. And frankly, it does not make sense. So, I'm beginning with my back to you, so I'm just addressing the board. Okay. So, I'm, I'm going to try and, Curtis said a lot of names, so I'm going to try and remember as many as I can and I'll break them down. So, um, this project is in a regional transmission organization, an RTO, and that is Southwest Power Pool. You probably know the United States is made up of a number of, uh, RTOs, regional transmission organizations. They all have their own rules and regulations, some are regulated, some are deregulated, et cetera. All right? But when you talk about bringing in a data center, that's not SPP, the Southwestern Power Pool who decides that. That data center is subject to the same zoning and conditional use permits and things that this plant is involved in or the micronutrient plants that are being built down the road. Right? It's not SPP who decides whether that plant is built or doesn't get built. It's, there's a planning and zoning committee who, who do that. What happens is, you know, if they have their use permit, uh, that data center, they have to do exactly the same thing that we do. And that is that they have to go to the utility who's servicing that area. In our case, it's MPPD and, and their retail arm, SPPD. And we go to them and we say, you know, we invite to build the facility that's going to, let's pick a number, that's going to draw 500 megawatts of load. Do you have 500 megawatts? And hopefully they say yes. If they say no, we go, oh, can you add 500 megawatts? And can you add it by the time we need it? And the answer to them, you know, that they give to us, saying that they give to everybody every time because they have a process for this. And they have to go to what's called an S I S. It's a system impact study. So for our project, we did exactly that. We did a system impact study with MPPD. And part of that study that MPPD does is they reach out because they are participants of the Southwest Power Pool. And they work with SPP and say, hey, we're doing an impact study. Can you please do a distribution network study on it so that we can understand where, across the entire generating network, this power can be generated? And then how it can be routed through our system of transmission wise, et cetera, to the point of interconnect, either the data center or our ammonia plants. Right? And there will be system upgrades. That's why it's called a system upgrade study, right? And when that study is completed, there are rules and regulations that say, if this is going to be, if we're going to build all these new facilities, somebody has to pay for it. And if that facility upgrade is dedicated to the project and it's only the project who's benefiting from it and not the rate payers, then the project pays for it. And oh, by the way, before it gets built, the project has to put up all the financial securities and so on ahead of time because the MPPDs of the world don't want to build this thing and then have to be left holding the baby. Right? So that's kind of, that's how that part works. And all the transmission wires, et cetera, that go through, everybody benefits. I mean, part of the reason we have a build back better plan. We now put the inflation question.
Oh, don't go there. No, no, no.
So if you want to, if you want to do nothing and see your infrastructure deteriorates, then do nothing. But if you want to, if you want to progress, you have to go through the process of applying for a loan and then you also have to go through all the studies to get your property.
Can we please keep the comments down?
Okay.
So we have five minutes.
Yeah, really, five minutes?
You know, it, again, I just want to say to Curtis, right? SPP has nothing to do with granting the data center. S P P has nothing to do with granting the data center. Studies would have been done. You know, there will probably be an increase, you know, there could be a million reasons for that increase in rates. The good news about Nebraska is because it's predominantly nuclear, it has very sacred rates. If you look at other R T Os such as MISO, if you go down into Louisiana, which is natural gas, their rates go up and down like ink on walls. And that's not because of MISO necessarily, it's the price of natural gas. And that's because there's a war going on and all the other things. But, you know, that happens across the nation. So, you know, please, hope that everything you hear, you'll back me on your, make sure that you understand the real reasons.
Adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and unnecessary facilities have been or are being provided. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress, so designated as minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. And you shall not include any activity involving the use or storage of flammable or explosive material unless protected by adequate firefighting suppression equipment and by such safety devices as are normally used in the hauling of any such material.
Yes. It's very, very hazardous. But it's stored properly. It's no different.
It's still a hazardous material.
Are there safety planning?
The use shall not at this time. The use shall not include noise that is a public nuisance due to volume, frequency, or speed unless muffled or otherwise controlled. The use shall not include vibration, which is discernible without instruments on any adjoining lot or property. The use shall not involve any pollution of the air by fly ash dust, vapors, or other substances which are harmful to health, animals, vegetation, or other property or which can cause soil disgovernment or irritation.
Irritation comes from ammonia leaks.
The use shall not involve any hazardous gas or matter that is discernible on any adjoining lot or property. The use shall not involve any direct or reflected glare that is visible from any adjoining property or from any public street, road, or highway. The use shall not involve any activities substantially increasing the level of traffic on public streets unless procedures are instituted to limit traffic hazards and congestion. The use shall not involve any activities substantially increasing the burden on any public utilities or facilities unless provisions are made for any necessary adjustments. Any other finds and facts arising from the public hearing?
I would like.
I would like to have.
It's on. The N R D could not make a recommendation not to have it here for one reason, we did not have, we're not over appropriated. So they had no clause that they could say no to an overwater user. As a feedlot, the F J M Farms of Phillips, Nebraska, is in the other side of the river, we're over appropriated. I had to take irrigated acres out in order to increase my feedlot capacity. That's the only reason why the N R D said yes. And it was unanimous. This is to the board mostly. That's the only reason why the N R D could not do anything. If it was over in Seward County, they would have probably said no because they don't have the water there. We have the water here to put it in and run it for whatever, 40 years or whatever it is. But I guess I'm a little on the edge on why we have to, it's water, we can't do anything about water. We're using the N R D as their, that is our governmental, we don't know enough, just like the fellow said. The N R D is not, it's the, it's our governing basis. We don't, we're not in that realm of dictating of what goes on.
We're out of the loop.
We're out of the loop, huh?
I'd like to make the recommendation that we include Marvin Planning Consultants' recommendations as our conditional use requirements. Yes, all of the conditions listed. And would like to respond that the biggest charge for our commission, according to my belief and my study, is our first job is to protect agricultural land. Then we have the regulations that allow other things in our county, like facilities. But for me, agriculture is just as viable as what our regulations say we can put on that ground. So that's where my takeback is.
Okay, can you entertain a motion for a recommendation of the conditional use permit?
I'll make a motion, we deny it.
Okay, so moved and seconded to deny the conditional use permit. Are there any discussions on the motion? Okay, hearing, no discussion on the motion. But the zoning commissioner, please call the roll. Please.
Kind of a yes to the right.
Brad?
Yes.
Hans Meyer?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Weatherington?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes, with lack of information for me to make a better decision.
McDonald?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Barry?
Yes, lack of information.
F?
Yes.
Prue?
Yes.
Okay, the conditional use permit was denied at this time for basically lack of information. So we'll move on to item number five, administrator report. I just want to add really quickly before everybody starts to clear out, this was a denial, so that will go to the board of commissioners as a recommendation for denial. So there will be another meeting, it'll be publicized, so. And I do not have anything to report. For the business, entertain a motion and second to adjourn the meeting. The time is 9:57. Could you please tag your chairs as you leave?